I do.
All he does is take all my stuff.
That's the way it goes. You're naked. They only see your front hips up and coughing, you're naked. Don't worry about the cowboy boots on your feet. There's no one will see it.
So if Anthony does not show up, they will flip the tables. He can almost do that.
Who are we missing or short in?
Anthony.
Then we're short anyway, right?
Um, nobody six for the um.
For seven.
Yeah, but but. Who's who's missing?
Anthony and Bobby.
Oh, yeah, like Bobby is just like you, I was gonna say.
Who's Bobby?
Hey, Bobby Dragic, yeah. No, you're okay, just have a seat. Yeah, you made a few people happy.
Well. All right, let's go ahead and get started.
So did you guys not hear?
Happy Halloween, everybody, we'll try to keep this going so we can. Um, we'll start tonight.
I could fire. I will.
We'll start tonight with the regularly scheduled October thirty first, twenty twenty four meeting of the Washington County zoning board of adjustments. Start with road call, please.
Absolutely, Anthony McNutt.
Here.
Bo uh Joe Maynor.
Here.
Um Lisa Miller.
Here.
J P O C.
Here.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
And Lauren Shetford.
Here, okay, so we have forums, I'm gonna call the meeting to order.
On the Z B A meeting, we have one item, it's in the county, the genus hide variance for acreage, is there any other changes or additions to the agenda statement?
No, sir.
Yeah, motion for approval is in the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, let's move on, start with that item, uh, item A genus hide variants for acreage staff report, please.
All right, this is our site map. These are the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting a variance to adjust a property line so that it will go around a permit structure rather than through it. The property line adjustment will transfer zero point zero six acres from tract one to tract two. After the adjustment, tract one would be five point two two acres and tract two would be zero point eight three acres. The variance is to allow tract two to remain smaller than the one acre minimum and to date we have no complaints received for the project.
So is that lot getting smaller or larger by this?
Larger by zero point zero six.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, any questions, other questions of staff from board members?
Surveyor applicant is here.
Okay, applicant surveyor, anything you would like to add?
No, sir.
Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to make comment on this item? Seeing now, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the genus hide variance.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Z B A meeting.
Motion here.
I'll take yours as a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, now I'll call it order the Washington County planning board meeting, again, the October thirty first regularly scheduled meeting, we'll start with road call again, please.
Absolutely, Anthony McNutt.
Here.
Joe Maynor.
Here.
Lisa Miller.
Here.
J P O C.
Here.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Lauren Shetford.
Here, so we have a quorum, we'll call the meeting to order, the first item is the approval of the minutes from our September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four meeting. Those should have been distributed for your review, got a copy here, if anybody wants to see them, any changes, emissions, additions need to be made into those minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion for approval in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, moving on, approval of the agenda, we have several items, conditional use permit, land use developments. I think that's it.
Yeah, four items.
Any changes to the agenda that's posted? Okay, entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, start with conditional use permits, item A pleasure heights church C U P, staff report, please.
Our vicinity map. The site map. And the neighbors who are notified. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to build a six thousand square foot church building and a parking lot to accommodate between seventy to one hundred and forty people. There'll be thirty five parking spaces to which are ADA accessible. If approved, the project will require large scale development, submittal and approval. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints about this project, the C U P was previously tabled for the applicant's request during our last planning board meeting. Um, since that time, the site plan has changed a little bit, approximately zero point five acres will be purchased from a neighboring parcel to adjust the existing property line, which will make the project parcel two point nine seven acres. There'll be five total employees, hours of operation will be Wednesday and Thursday from six to nine, Sunday morning from ten a.m. to two p.m. And Sunday evening from six p.m. to nine p.m. along with occasional wedding and funeral events. The applicant is still working on health department, um, septic approval and perk tests.
Okay, any questions of board of staff?
Uh, the three point five eight acres is not correct.
So currently it is three point five eight acres because it hasn't been recorded. Once it's recorded, it will go down because they've done a property line adjustment and then they're gonna do an additional one.
An additional point five to it, no.
I've got a question on this perk test, uh, is something that was just started or are they working on some design system because of the attendance expected that the and is there any question of whether it's gonna be approved, is the type of?
Well, the D R, the the D R like did not have the chance to go on like make sure like it is gonna perk and like it's gonna like meet the requirements for the number of like uh uh occupants that are gonna be in that building and James, like the engineer is here, like he can't like add more comments.
Questions online.
All right, um, and just a reminder, this is the conditional use permit, it would have to come back before us for large scale.
Definitely, yes.
Verify that that is accurate and completed at that time, all right, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Represented, if you would please state your name, address for the record, tell us.
James Kirk, Z B A, uh, one thirty four West Adams Street, on Main.
Okay, so.
Any questions, we are doing uh a D R, we were actually changing D Rs, the one we had wasn't working out with us, now we'll have to we've got to reach out for Rebecca Corbett to try and ascertain if we'll be able to do the septic on this facility. Uh, the reason for the additional point five acres was the original D R recommended being a normal, so we took his stipulations and laid out a site with his requirements and we have not yet had someone go and dig holes to to protest on those septic locations, so.
Is is there any gap that there will be some type of system that will be acceptable?
We do believe so, yes.
That's, I know there's.
And then the the site will be limited if there is a limiting factor from septic to the size of the building and occupancy.
Yeah, that that's the part like that, when you go to the L S D M, like we have to adjust everything to.
Yeah, and like there's not, everybody's on taking showers there.
Exactly.
No.
It's different.
Yeah.
Of utilization.
Yeah, that's not an everyday peaking issue, it's just have two peaks and.
It's not like fifty homes.
Exactly.
Any other questions of the applicant from board? Okay, is there anybody that would like to make a public comment on this item? Seeing now, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I just look clarification, so if this being, if it's, this is approved, they have a thirty days for the ratification period. They can secure like the perk test within their thirty days, that would be great, otherwise we'll have to postpone the ratification, then we'll get back to you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the President's pleasure heights church C U P.
Got a motion to a second, motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, thank you, all right, moving on, land development hearings, first item in the county, Billy Peoples Minor subdivision, we'll start with a staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map. Site map. And the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting a minor subdivision to split five point zero two acre parcel into tracts. Tract one would be one point zero two acres in size and tract two would be four acres in size. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints about the project.
Okay, so yeah, so my normal question, why is this proposed and not handled administratively?
There are multiple tracts that are less than five acres.
Okay, my next question, what about ingress and egress for the proposed tract two, is there a dedicated easement access?
On the north of track two.
Of the north or the way to the mid of the tract two.
Okay, so there's, okay, thirty foot easement?
Yes.
Yeah, and the applicant, and like the the property owner for tract two is aware that this track is gonna stay as is, so unless if he's gonna split in the future, he has to create a separate access easement, so that access easement is limited to that.
To the four acres?
Yes.
If the four acres were split.
Yeah, he needs to come.
He would have to come back, okay, and then should it be dedicated as a utility and access easement or just?
Yeah, both of them, utility access easement.
Okay, all right, any other questions of board for staff? Seeing now, is the applicant or applicant's representative here?
Taylor DeBride, Nashville State Engineering Center.
Appreciate it, uh, anything you wanna add regarding the project?
Yeah, um, at the risk of shooting myself, but that that has been amended, um. It's not four acres and one acres, it's three and a half and one and a half, uh, we had to screw the line over so that, um, there was plenty of setback between where they have their pad now, uh, and would, you know, so that weren't in the setback line, also enough room for septic. Also in the new drawing, um, that thirty feet on the north end is listed as an access and utility easement.
All right, so a question of staff, any issue acting on this, if there's changes and modifications to propose?
No, we're like, we 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 would love to have the survey like, uh, reported to us so we can review it and make sure like it's okay before we can move on, so we can, uh, we can add like this survey approved as a condition?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, anybody uh from the public like to make comment on this item? Seeing now, I'll bring it back to the board.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that the Billy Peoples Minor subdivision with the amendments to lot size be approved.
Got a motion for approval, subject to submittal of corrected survey. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, moving on, item C also county, the Carney Minor Subdivision, start with the staff report, please.
This is our vicinity map. The site map. And the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting a minor subdivision approval to split a seven point zero two acre parcel to create three new tracts. Tract one A would be two point five one acres, tract one B would be two point five acres and tract one C would be two point zero one acres. To date, planning staff has not received any complaints about the project, this is similar to the last one where there's multiple tracts that are less than five acres.
Okay, and they all have road frontage?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions of board members for staff?
Is that overhead power, is that what we're seeing?
Yes, sir, yeah, the one like they have in on the gas, yeah.
Yeah, there's an existing house on one piece, so I think that's power service to that house.
Yeah.
Is it overhead or is it underground?
I believe it's all over the road lane, over here.
Okay. Okay, any other questions of board or staff? Not applicant, applicant's representative, you state your name.
Is there a, sorry, man among the brush?
Yes, uh, uh, road frontage, if it's like five, five acres or less has to be a hundred, five or more, it is one sixty five.
And your one forty two?
Yeah.
One forty two, one hundred fifty.
Oh, yeah, that's.
All right, anything else you'd like to add to the project?
If you have any questions, if you have them.
Okay, anybody have questions of the applicant? Appreciate it, anybody in the public like to make public comment on this? Okay, seeing now, I'll bring it back to board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the Carney Minor Subdivision.
Second, we got a motion in a second for approval submitted, any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, moving on, item D Allen Meadow Estates preliminary subdivision, start with the staff report, please.
This is the vicinity map. The site map. And the neighbors that were notified. The applicant is requesting preliminary subdivision approval to split a fifty four point eight acre parcel into twenty nine lots. All lots will range in size from one acre to four point two eight acres. Each lot will be serviced by individual septic systems and to date, planning staff has received one neighbor concern regarding drainage and rainwater runoff. These are our planning conditions.
Can you go back to the vicinity map for me, please? Sorry, I liked it. You got subdivisions, southwest, southeast.
We approved like strawberry plants here like west side.
Okay. All right, um. So.
It'll drain to the northeast, northwest.
Northwest, there's like, yeah. That's where the detention pond is, there are engineers here like on the project manager on the.
Okay, all right, any questions of staff from board?
You can set street map again, please. Are there other requirements or, I know that they have some, they're all thinking about fire, there's no dead end roads got up to?
Yes, I mean, any, um, the, uh, the roads should not exceed, uh, twelve hundred, twelve hundred feet without uh turnaround, whatever it is like why hammerhead or like it's cul-de-sac or anything, so that meets all the requirements. Um, and each individual like lot is gonna have its own like, uh, culvert and they're gonna have to work with the road department once they meet the requirements and get approved and it's been adopted to the county road system. They have to meet the requirements for like culvert permits, so, yeah, and it's, they're utilizing open ditch for like easy cleaning and easy, easy service.
How many one acre lots are proposed, I'm kinda having a hard time.
There is, uh, there is one that's exactly one acre, and most of them between like one and two. And there's like few of them that that's just like three to four point five. The biggest one like on the north and the south and everything else is like within the one and three.
But each lot has to individually park.
Yes, and they already like secured like two sides, like the primary and the secondary for each one of them.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So the one acre.
Oh, that's one of the, uh, submitted like requirements, we have to have everything before we start, under state requirement. Well, uh, that's the prelim plan, I mean, like, the staff report has like, uh, has about like, what is it, nine pages, just like plans, yes. That's like a snippet of like one of them, we have everything on the staff report.
So we wouldn't see this again until final plan?
Yes.
Okay.
At what point would we, and and is there anything as far as the requirements for the type or the square footage of the homes being built on it?
Uh, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't have like square footage requirements, uh, but yeah, they, we do have like setbacks, I'm like, they're aware of it, so, yeah.
So that would be controlled by N H O A or?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, any other questions of staff or board members? Okay, is the applicant, applicant's representative here?
Yes, my name's Dan Cole with Sand Creek Engineering, I'd say the one piece to add is, um, along Strawberry Plant Road, they're at the east. We are in coordination with a developer that's already been before you to the northeast, forgetting any kind of extra additional utilities and still out for water line, which is the main infrastructure piece that we're adding into this area.
Okay, what are the utilities provided in this?
It'll be obviously the the water, um, gas, telecommunications and obviously we're on on septic for the wastewater.
Yeah, they're too close to the planning area of like twenty town, so that they're serviced by the same. They're completely in the county.
All right, other questions of applicant from board? I guess one question, um, individuals raised about drains, run, rain, water runoff, sorry, I can't talk today, can you speak a little bit about the?
Yes, yes, we did have one, uh, feedback question, it was some clarity along really that southeast side. And the main point of that is, yes, we are taking care of stormwater rolling onto us. The, uh, earth, grass, uh, swells and a combination of storms who provides to get into that main drainage wave, which kind of flows from the southeast out to the northeast, so those, um, the concern has been acknowledged and I think we've we've got taken care of with our grading and drainage.
And that's been reviewed.
Yes, and the their drainage like report is about like hundred eighty page, something, it's thick, yeah.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant from board?
So it's been extensively.
Oh, yeah.
Surged, yeah, confirmed.
Yeah.
Hundred eighty pages.
It's actually the whole.
I don't need to read it.
Yeah, the whole, the whole staff report has to be shrunk from eight hundred ten pages to four fifty, it's online.
Okay.
Okay, uh, appreciate it, uh, is there anybody from the public that would like to make comment on this? If you would please state your name and address for the record.
Aaron Duow, I live at one eight five six one Harmon Road, which is, um, at the corner of Harmon and Strawberry Plant. Um, so what's gonna happen to the Strawberry Plant Road, it's a dirt road right now, so how are you gonna support all of those vehicles coming in and out of that area? Is it gonna stay a dirt road, is it gonna be paved, what's gonna happen?
We, uh, we have not like received any feedback from the road department, it's gonna be like when they're scheduled like for like pavement, but they're always like, they always have set maintenance schedule, I guess like a minimum of like twice some, uh, a year.
For great improvement?
Yes, you can always, like, if there's any complaints, you can always reach out to the road department and they'll send it greater to fix it.
Because we do have chicken farms down there.
Yeah, I know.
So heavy traffic.
Yeah, I know, I mean, you can always reach to the road department, but we never had any issue with them not approving this as a project. And eventually, anything within that subdivision has to be the state, like the, uh, campy requirement or like a cross section. Uh, so eventually, if it's been adopted, it will fit like everything else we have, so it'll be in the future, pay everything, it's just gonna connect to it. But yeah, if you have any issues right now, I would encourage you like to reach to the road department, their phone number is four seven nine four 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 sixty ten, six zero one zero. And like, yeah, just reach out to them and say, look, hey, we have issues, I need some some supervisor to take, take a look.
Um, as to that drainage question, you know, we've had towns out there forever and they've just recently been removed, um, because of the project. So what's gonna happen to that creek, is it's like completely disappearing is what you're saying?
Um, no, like we're, they're not hiding the entire stream, cause we do have, it's a good question, there are two things. We do have two points of access and we have paved access off of Harmon Road, so I believe most of your residents, I'm guessing, are going to come off that pavement, pavement, as opposed to going Strawberry Plant and then. So the second piece for the drainage, we do have two concrete boxes, so it's, there's a lot of water that flows, flows through there. And so we are having two big concrete boxes to allow stormwater to flow through that area and we're not filling in to have just one big flat tabletop lot, but piping the entire stretch.
Is there, so you're saying if that creek will still have water in it as much as it does today, should she need to use that, do you use that to water your cattle?
No, 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 there's a neighbor who's leasing that land and because it's been sold, the cattle been removed. But it's still, I mean, the neighbors that I think it's Legacy Estates or something, the little subdivision that's across from us now. It runs along behind them and then flows under Harmon.
Okay.
Through that field and it continues on, so I'm asking, are you like demolishing that, rerouting that, putting it under ground, what do you, I mean, what exactly does that look like?
We're keeping the existing drainage pattern through that existing path, we're basically adding similar what you see in Harmon Road. We're adding again further down the screen, uh, cause the Harmon Road has one big, it's gonna be a concrete box, drainage box, we're doing something similar for our drainage crossing there off Strawberry Plant Road.
It's one of the requirements of the water that going out equals what that's going out, like that stormwater should not change with that construction. You should like equalize it.
I was just gonna.
This is my husband.
Do a question, I know.
Yes, sir, Keith Duow, one eight five six one Harmon Road, she's a smart one. Smart, she's, she's also a science teacher and during the summer, she'll have students out for educational programs and they sometimes use the water for under a microscope or what have you, so we've always had permission to go to that property, so I'm sure that's another aspect that's coming up as well.
Are we gonna be able to access dance or it's all private property?
I I can't speak to the developer and ultimately it will be in between you and whoever occupies that home as of now, so you're talking about two property owners from now? So that would be to be determined. If if I'm in contention. Yes. So regarding Strawberry Plant Road and utilities. Uh, again, she's a smarter one, the the water line, the power line, everything runs through our property, which would be on the east side of Strawberry Plant. What impact do we expect to the prop, the current property owners on the east side of Strawberry Plant in regards to access to utilities, construction for utilities and, uh, potential loss of our property, uh, I mean, we've, we see a survey mark in our driveway, no problem with that, just trying to understand what that means and what that impact could potentially be to our property. I can say for our infrastructure and also believe for the development to the northeast. We are planning that water line upside, I think there's like a two or six inch water line on your side. Yes, sir. And that larger sized water line is going to be on the opposite, that would be our side.
Yeah, okay.
The west side of Strawberry Plant, so they shouldn't be, it's intended that they're not going to be going on your side of that.
Okay.
For that.
But your side should be in the utility easement.
Yeah, right.
So. Right, yeah, yes, sir, but I just didn't know if there's gonna be any kind of plan to shift that easement, you know, do they need to relocate power lines to the gas line?
No.
They would have to negotiate with you to change it.
Okay.
Yeah, you would, you would know, it's.
Yeah, it would be an imminent domain issue, you would be involved, now, that's a great question.
Yes.
But, yeah. Okay. Any other questions, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Ryan Smith Peters, one eight five three seven Harmon Road, just wanted to confirm that the drainage, uh, concern, that was mine that you guys were referring to, if you're correct. Everybody should. That's, that's, that's mine.
Okay.
Um, he just loaned it to you, like, I'm not sure if you saw it.
Okay, that was my main concern, just making sure during construction or after construction, it's not impeded in any way. Uh, my, my property does flow, uh, actually the property next to me flows onto my property and my property flows onto that property, so uh, I'll have a, I'll have a lake back there.
Do you have a swimming pool?
I do have a swimming pool, I don't want to. Um, the water pressure, uh, there's plenty of water pressure out there, I'm assuming that's what you're adjusting up for with the water line.
Yes.
Okay.
And this is all been, uh, like reviewed like so far like four times by the county engineers. Between them and us and like our county engineer went back and forth, that's why the stack, staff report is this thick.
And it's probably worth noting that the requirement is, as he mentioned, as the property sits today, once it's developed, the water study has to share the same level of water into the project and out of the project after development.
And if anything happens during the process, like during the development process itself, they have to adjust to it, will be notified, the engineer will like have to review it and they do like review their, just they have to, that's part of the million dollars like investment.
Okay, la- last question, this other subdivision, it's just, it's up there, are they using Strawberry Road as well or are they? Or how is that, both these are gonna be coming off Strawberry Road?
I guess this one is their main entrance is gonna be here, so that is their main entrance, this one is like this entrance and this is not gonna be touched.
Okay. Just trying to understand that.
Yeah.
Both subdivisions will have access to pay, but that doesn't mean people won't use that road. That's, that would be what I would consider a secondary easement, our access, sorry.
Okay. One hand.
Okay, any other public comment? Would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Mark Wagner, I'm at one eight five two nine Harmon Road. Curious, are, are there going to be lots in that far north section on the other side of the drainage?
Yes, there are two lots, they're like four acres, they're, they're, they're big lots and there is an existing access utilities that runs off of Strawberry Plant Road that provides access to those two large amounts.
So you won't have any? Uh, it, I'm trying to.
Unit point two.
Yeah, is this a, is this a road here then?
No, that's probably the drainage.
Okay, that's property line and then these two lots are gonna have access from
Strawberry Plant Road.
From some, some other direction.
Yes.
Can I go closer?
Yes.
Sorry.
Everything, everything, everything is online, I mean, like, we, yeah.
Okay, so it's kind of blurry, so where exactly, I I thought this was like, this, I thought this is where we were and this was Harmon Road, but where exactly is Harmon Road then? Okay, so it's kind of blurry. So where exactly, I, I thought this was like, this, I thought this is where we were and this was Harmon Road, but where exactly is Harmon Road then on here?
Harmon Road is the very bottom row.
Okay, so I was looking at it right because our property is right there then.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's going to be an entrance up here, like where the old abandoned house is basically?
Yeah.
And then off of, what's this distance right here? How far away is that going to be from Strawberry Plant?
It, I want to say it's over three, 300 plus feet?
Yeah, about 300 something.
Yeah, I swear, it was like, I can't tell.
308 maybe?
Okay, so another question I have is, Legacy Estates started off, my understanding, supposed to be something like this and then it went to like Porter River Lots. What's going to keep this from happening?
Septic.
Yes.
Each one has requirements for septic. And that's, I was surprised the one acre lot is current. So that's, that's going to be limited.
Especially the secondary too. You have primary and secondary.
Yes.
And that's going to turn out to be able to fit.
It's an order and it says nothing less than one acre. They cannot like, after like that's been adopted into the, uh, the plan.
Is it the same for the one that's going up to the northeast of that?
It's always the same.
Yeah, should this be approved, they were going to do anything different than that, it would have to come back.
Come back, yeah.
For approval and you'd get a notification again.
Yep.
It's something else.
So as of right now, there's no way it should go less than an acre?
No. And it would be hard to get it done unless if you change the order.
And it would be hard to get it to perk even if you got a.
Oh, exactly.
If they did that, they might have to hire a new engineer too.
Alright, any other questions? Or any other statements, comments, input for public?
Lastly, where can I, where can I access this map?
It's all online. If you go to our website, if you go to our website, we sent you like the neighborhood notification.
I got the note.
Yeah, it's like on our website, it should be, it says like staff report, you click on it, they put download, they look back. It's 400 plus pages.
Yep.
In case you can't sleep.
Oh, yeah, we can.
Just email it out.
Email us like we'll send you.
Yes.
Yeah, email us like when the planning, email and we'll put send you a copy. No big deal.
Can I ask one more question? What's the timeline to get to the finished product?
I have no idea.
I wish I do, I mean.
We got a couple of years to enjoy this.
I don't, I don't think there's a subdivision that's less than 18 months to like two years. Yeah. Yeah.
It's just going to be sent.
It everything is. Well, you should have thought of it.
Alright, bring it back to order. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion that we approve the Allen Meadows Meadow State preliminary subdivision, submitted.
We got a motion?
I'll second that.
And a second. Sam, I would ask, as we've done in the past, as road department reviews this, if you would just kind of mention to them the.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Oh, definitely.
This additional traffic might move it up and pay, so if you can make that note to the, this is probably part of it, I appreciate it. Alright, any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay.
Email us directly, any matter.
Is that it?
Thank you. Yeah, that's it for today. So the other like two items that we need to discuss, it's not that much, uh, I guess like next month, uh, has not been determined yet. Yet, but like the planning and zoning is going to go to the service committee. I believe it's on the 12th of this, of November. So we're going to discuss this like further and see what's going to happen and we'll let you know.
What committees that go on to?
That's the service committee.
Service?
Yeah, so it's a core and core service committee. So they're going to review the new changes.
Is that combined with the?
Yes, with the, uh, it's combined with the budget committee. So it's going to be like a fun meeting. Uh, the other thing we have like a new appointment for the zoning board adjustment and planning board, Mr. Bob, Robert Daughtry is coming back. The legend himself, so we'll see him. He, he had a surgery yesterday, that's why he's not here today, but like we'll see him next time.
Okay.
Yep, and I have that. Happy Halloween.
Alright, anything else for the good of the order? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion?
Second.
Three seconds, all those in favor say aye?